I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, May 24th, 2021, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. We are present this evening in our new school board meeting room located at Northfield Public Schools District Offices, formerly Longfellow School. Attending tonight's meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Joel Lear, Principal, Northfield High School, Joel Olson, Activities Director, Northfield High School, Sarah Pratt, Assistant Director of Special Services, and Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School. This meeting is open to the public and is being livestreamed. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, in this afternoon's table file, you have an addition to the items for discussion reports, request to hire an additional licensed special education occupational therapist. There are also several personnel items, including some appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, retirements, resignations, and terminations. That is the table file for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Public comment: We now have an opportunity for residents, business, and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will note that we have also made available the ability on the district's website for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by no later than 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment would be read now by myself. However, we have no public comments for this evening, so we can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have three announcements this evening. The first, and very exciting, we want to congratulate Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoine. She has been selected as Minnesota's 2021 National Association of Elementary School Principals National Distinguished Principal Award. So each state honors one person as the NAESP Distinguished Principal, and Mrs. Antoine was selected. So we are very proud of Mrs. Antoine. This is the highest honor that a Minnesota elementary principal can earn. And so I'm just going to read a little bit from the press release that NAESP shared. Mrs. Antoine began her career in education in 1987 as a mathematics teacher in a school district in far Texas. In 1991, she moved to the Minneapolis Public School District where she continued teaching mathematics for an additional five years before becoming an instructional assistant at elementary schools in New Hope. In 2001, Mrs. Antoine became the Assistant Principal at Prairie Elementary School in Worthington, Minnesota, and then served as that school's principal from 2002 to 2007. Mrs. Antoine has now been the principal at Bridgewater Elementary for over 13 years. She received her Bachelor of Science in Mathematics Education from Morehead State University, and her Masters of K-12 in Curriculum Instruction at the University of St. Thomas. And so we are so proud of Mrs. Antoine for earning this very prestigious honor. And I know that it's been out there for a little bit, but we're very proud of her, and we congratulate her on winning that honor. We also got some very exciting news on Friday afternoon that the Minnesota Department of Education has granted final approval for our application to have our Portage All the Time Online Program be an official state-approved online learning provider, serving grades K through 12, beginning with the 21, 22 school year. And as Hope Langston wrote to the Portage staff on Friday afternoon, "The process was a stellar example of a dedicated collaborative team effort, and wanting to thank all of those people who assisted in any way with the application processes." And as she described to you, we had all sorts of stakeholders participate in that, students, staff, parents, and families. And we had said to you at the beginning of last year that we were going to make sure that we took what we learned during the pandemic and we were going to carry it forward. And this is one of your receipts, right? We are now an official state-approved online learning provider. And it was an arduous task, and I just cannot thank Hope and the team enough for all of their work to make it happen. So congratulations to Hope and actually to the whole community, because we now have a formerly state-approved online learning provider. And then finally, I want to share with you something that's also very exciting. Northfield was named a bright spot for COVID response. And the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, so this is a national organization who really focuses on making sure that students are able to read at grade level. We know how important that is. And they identified that Northfield is a 2021 bright spot community for our responses to COVID over the last year. Northfield was one of only 54 communities in the entire country, and the only one in Minnesota to receive this recognition. And highlighted were the communities that developed exemplary or innovative responses to the COVID-19 crisis between May and December of 2020, including new or adaptive roles, programs, organizational relationships, policies, or resources. These bright spot communities were recognized for crafting solutions that seemed especially effective and deserving of being sustained post-COVID. And in Northfield, four efforts, these are all initiatives that are supported by Northfield Promise, a local collaboration to help make sure that we're providing student support. There are four programs that were called out. The Early Childhood Navigators, which you've heard about before, our Family Engagement Navigators, that were really important, especially in distance learning, our 100% Connected Program, making sure that every family had connectivity to the internet, and then our Move Five Kids Program. So those specific four initiatives, all championed by Northfield Promise and really administered with the support of Northfield Promise, those were the efforts that the Campaign for Grade Level Reading highlighted as us for being a 2021 bright spot. And I think with all of the things that we've been talking about, right? It always comes back to things that are important about core quality instruction, with reading being one of the most important things. And so to have this national recognition from a group that is really focused on making sure that students read at grade level, I think is a real... It's just, it really shows how hard we have worked to not let the pandemic create any kind of academic loss. We know there's going to be some, but we know that this has really helped us to try to make sure that we're at least even during this global health emergency. So we want to thank Northfield Promise, the Healthy Community Initiative. We just have all of these partnerships, right, that are part of our vision that have helped us get through this in a way that I think many other communities envy, that wish they could have had those resources. So those are our announcements for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Board members have any other, anything else they would like to add? Okay, we can move on then to first item for discussion, which is Policy Committee Reports. Policy Committee Recommendations, I'm sorry. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so I'd really like to talk with you about, we've got several policy recommendations. And part of our policy recommendations this time are a number of handbooks. So this is first reading. So in your packet, these are all labeled starting with 5.a. I'm not going to go through all of the handbooks, ALC, Child Nutrition, the Child Nutrition Appendix, the Early Ventures Handbook, the Elementary Handbook. These are first reading, and we know there's a lot of handbooks there. The Policy Committee continues to work every year on improving these handbooks. We've made some significant improvements over the last couple of years, starting with the building levels. They continue to work on making adjustments. And so I'm not going to go through each of those, but when we get to the question portion, I want you to be able to ask questions about those. These are first reading. I do want to highlight, though, in the proposed policies, Policy 950, and Policy 950 would be a new policy, and it's around land acknowledgement. So you've seen there's been quite a few organizations that have adopted what are called land acknowledgement statements. This process started with our District Youth Council and their Diversity and Equity Subcommittee, looking at what they could do to make a difference within our community. And they followed and looked at the processes used by other local government and private entities who have adopted land acknowledgement statements. They did quite a bit of research about what a land acknowledgement statement is, why it's something that's important, and they brought their work to the Policy Committee. So on our Policy Committee, Amy Gurwitz, Noel Stratmon, and Corey Butler. And so the students presented twice to that Policy Committee about their idea and concept. As a Policy Committee, we took their ideas and we formulated them into a policy. So this is something that was generated by our students asking us to adopt this policy. And again, what I want to focus on is the fact that it would be new, and it really identifies what our land acknowledgement statement would be. And I'm going to read the proposed land acknowledgement statement to you. It would say that "The Northfield School District recognizes that we reside on the homeland of the Wapakute Tribe of the Dakota Nation. We acknowledge the wrongdoings, previous and ongoing, and strive to repair and strengthen our relationships with Indigenous people." And so that is a statement. A lot of other organizations solely adopt the statement. We are also adding to it, how would it be used, right? We think that that's important. And so we're saying that the land acknowledgement statement would be read at the school board organizational meeting in January, at the school board meeting, nearest Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is usually the second Monday in October, and at the Northfield High School and Area Learning Center graduations. We would also post it on the district's website. It would be located in the nature areas at the elementary school campus. Each elementary school has a nature area, so we'd make sure that it's posted near or in the nature area, be on our meeting agendas. And it would also have a prominent location inside each school building office. And then we're saying that the land acknowledgement statement may be read in other circumstances as determined by an administrator. And so again, this is a new policy that was brought to us. The idea was brought to us by students. The Policy Committee really gave them a rigorous opportunity to learn how its policy developed. They made adjustments and modifications to it. And then I am proud to bring you the result of that this evening. So the other pieces that are on the agenda this evening are first reading of handbooks. And you know that the handbooks are quite, there's quite a bit there. But I wanted to point out that this is a potential adoption of a new policy. So I will simply stop there and ask if there are any questions or thoughts about any of the handbooks that we have brought forward for first reading and/or Policy 950.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with just isolating any questions or comments on Policy 950 land acknowledgement, and then we can open up more broadly to all handbooks. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Yes. So the statement here ends with "strive to repair and strengthen our relationships with Indigenous peoples." And I know the Human Rights Commission in town has additional wording on that regarding honest storytelling. And I just hear some thoughts on that.
So I know that the, this is the statement that was presented by, and some of the students, I believe, are also on the... I'm going to take that back. These are our District Youth Council students. They looked at a variety of different statements, and this is the one that they proposed. And so you'll know there's a variety of different landing knowledge. Some are, this one's probably in the middle, right? There are some that are a little longer. There are some that are a little bit shorter. Various words selected. This was what they brought forward, and I think that they wanted to keep it simple and straightforward so that we were really acknowledging the parts of how we want to repair and strengthen our relations with Indigenous peoples. I don't think it was intentionally left out. I just think that this was the, as they looked at a number of them, this is the one that they felt was the best for our school district.
Sure, and I love it the way it is. I just think that there's a lot of thoughts currently about moving beyond just a statement and really into an action-oriented and, you know, including those groups. So just wanted to hear some thoughts on that.
Well, and I really appreciate, that's one of the reasons that we put it as a policy, Claudia, because we fear that you can adopt a statement, and then that's all it is. But that, I think the key part of this strategy, which is different than maybe other organizations, is that we are including how is it disseminated. So it's not just about itself. It's also that we're going, how we're going to use the statement in other areas. And then we completely agree that it's about moving to action.
Claudia, I do, in fact, for everyone to have what this Northfield City Council approved. So their statement reads, "We stand in the homelands of the Wapakute Band of the Dakota Nation. We honor with gratitude the people who have stewarded the land throughout the generations and their ongoing contributions to this region. We acknowledge the ongoing injustices that we have committed against the Dakota Nation, and we wish to interpret this legacy beginning with acts of healing and honest storytelling about this place." But I agree with you, Claudia. I like how succinctly this reads. So just FYI, that's what, so we are having some, you know, we are collaborating with the city, and both the colleges have land acknowledgement statements as well. So we're all kind of working together to have these policies in place, but there's just a little bit different wording. Other questions or comments from other board members? Amy?
As Matt mentioned, I'm on the Policy Committee, and I just wanted to sort of validate or enforce what Matt was saying about the students and how this is very much a student-led process. And they went through a couple iterations of it, and I know they also checked with the St. Olaf and the city and the Carlton statements, and this is the wording that they came up with. So I don't know all of the thinking behind it, but I thought it was very well done.
And if I might add to Claudia's point before too, I just pulled up the presentation that they gave, which we used to develop the policy. And there are steps that would happen next in terms of some reform within some education components. And then also looking at how do we support our Indigenous friends and neighbors and things about actively supporting them, speaking up even when they feel scared, acknowledging that the conversation isn't always about you. So there are some other pieces that I think that the District Youth Council is very excited to be able to take this and make it action-oriented within the student body.
Other questions, comments? I have to echo that as well, because what's really important to me, of course, you know, the statement, the statement is important, but what really is important to me is what actions will be taken once we put this statement in place? Is this just a check the box? Or are we going to do some work? Is some work going to happen as a result of this? And I'm hearing that, you know, it's resulting in some action. We already know you have reported some work that you do with Indigenous families in the community. There's some work around curriculum at the, in the schools, you know, which I think is really important. So again, to me, it's not, it's not just an act of checking the box. It's really springing into action some other work that the district will commit to doing. Okay, so that's Policy 950. So more broadly, is there any questions or comments on the other handbooks that were given to us for first reading? Tom?
I have a couple small comments or questions. In the co-curricular activities, is the robotics team now an activity? I mean, I didn't see it listed. It used to be a class, but now it should be listed activity?
Yes, and we are working on making that conversion, Tom. So thanks for catching that, that it was not listed in the book.
Okay. In the Kid Ventures, on page 14, it talks about a processing fee if there's a return check. Does that happen very often? Does anybody know?
Well, we happen to have Val Murdestore, our Finance Director, is here, or we also have Erin Bailey online. I'm not forgetting that, because I forgot that the last time. But Val, do you want to take a shot at that one? I think you can speak up.
Yeah, well, then, so my comment on that is, you know, if somebody's living paycheck to paycheck, or their check bounces for whatever reason, the last thing you want to do is stick another $20 fee on them, and that's a week's worth of food. Is there any... And if it's a third-party company, I don't know if we have much control over that, but is there any way to... I mean, I'd pay for it. I'd pay the $20 fee. I mean, it just seems punitive for something that, you know... For people who are, who have financial privilege, I mean, for lack of better description, don't have to worry about that. And some people who are maybe living more paycheck to paycheck and having to get, and this happens in more instances. You know, you don't want to add a fee on to something where they're already struggling to make a payment. But I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that or not. Thanks.
Erin, do you have any, I want to make, we've got Erin. So Erin, do you have any comment on that at all?
I can't, I can't actually hear what Val is saying. So I don't know if I'm going to repeat what she's saying. The vast majority of our payments are actually online. I will say that. So to tip, it's rare that we get a check, not totally uncommon, but it's pretty rare that we would have a check. Most of our payments are made online. And then, Tom, I just would want you to know, we do... We are one of the few school-age childcare programs that does accept the county assistance dollars. And so we do have some avenues for scholarships for families, should that be necessary. And that's pretty limited in school-age care. We do accept it at both Early Ventures and at Kid Ventures. At Early Ventures, we have even considerably more scholarship options, but we do accept C cap dollars at school-age care programs at all sites as well.
All right, thank you. And also, on that same one, I think it's page 16. And I pointed this out to Anita, who confirmed with Erin, change, additional contact. Right now, it says no credits for changes will be given for sick or vacation days. I think they reworded that to be a little more clear. And Erin, I don't have what you guys came up with, but...
We did reword it. I think it, if you sit in the childcare setting a lot, this probably made more sense to you, because some childcares do provide credits, or they provide vacation days or sick days. So it will read, Tom, no credits will be given for days scheduled, or days that students are out sick on vacation or absent for any reason. We have other means of when they can have release days and vacation days, and they indicate those differently. So those, it will read differently.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And then the last one is on the Northfield High School Student Handbook. And I think it's page 19 again, under the Law Enforcement Agencies. I don't know if we need to update the wording on that relative to the student handbook?
Yes, Tom, we're still working on the student. You'll notice that the Student Citizenship Handbook isn't done tonight for approval, because there are a few things that we're reworking based on some comments from the last time. So, Tom, I will have to crosswalk that and make sure that we've got a similar piece here as well. So we'll take a look at that between now and the time that we ask you to approve it.
Great, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Tom. Other questions, comments? Claudia?
I just felt like, generally speaking, if we could make sure that all the handbooks have parent slash guardian, there are sections where, across the different handbooks, it just states parent, and then in the, you know, a few pages down, then it'll say parent slash guardian. And so it makes it seem like in this part, only the parent is required.
And Claudia, you hit on one of the things that we are working really hard on. We actually have created a style guide for our handbooks. It's one of the things that has come out through this Policy Committee. And we are, in prior times, every building handled their own handbook. And so as they developed over time, they became disparate. So we now have all of those handbooks. Anita is doing the updates for all of the handbooks, and we are working on making exactly those kinds of changes. So we appreciate you pointing it out. We have a style guide that we are trying to apply across all, but as you can see, these handbooks are a fairly heavy lift to get into. And so we've made a significant amount of improvement, but that's exactly the kind of feedback we need, because we can address that with a find and replace.
Exactly. And it was within one handbook, you would have in one section, parent, and then right below would be parent slash guardian. I don't know if there was maybe an alternate word that can be used. I used to use "you're grown up" or "you're adult." But when you get into the ALC handbook, some of the students are adults, so that you can't change the language to "the adult must be notified," or "the adult must check you out." Anyway, so that was one. And then also consider using the pronoun "they" instead of "he/she", as much as somebody in my age group, it took a long time to get used to that pronoun for singular. It is accepted now.
And that's, again, part of the style guide that we're working on.
Okay. So that was that. And then in the Greenville Handbook, there's a place about page 11, I think, where they talks about the before plans to arrive at 7:50, but I think earlier on, they can't arrive any earlier than 7:55. After-school plans, before-school plans? Anyway, there's a place in the Greenville Handbook, in the Elementary Handbook, in the Greenville section. But there's, I might check the times on that. And then also, I didn't know if the lunch prices were all, you know, current, because I think we had talked about an increase there.
I do know I can make a comment, Claudia. I do know that if you look at the child nutrition lunch prices, and then you look at the high school and elementary school nutrition prices, they are off by a nickel.
And I, yeah, and that's part of, is that, I need, I'm thinking that's part of the, is that part of the appendix that we have as part? So what you'll notice is that in the handbook piece as well, so that we didn't replace every single one in the handbooks, we have the Child Nutrition Appendix, which is separate. That will replace the current child nutrition in all of the handbooks that you're seeing. So there's a separate piece that you had in your packet that will be the replacement in all of those handbooks for the Child Nutrition section, which would include the updated prices.
Okay, good, yeah. Good, because I know. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Just a couple more items. I was wondering if the committee would consider, at the beginning of all the handbooks, it says to assist in the operation of the school, and to have maybe consider some wording that pushes it more to support, rather than the operation of the school, the thing, is something more people-oriented, like to support a great learning environment for students and staff, rather than for the operation of the school. Something to consider. And then my final comment has to do with probably something little sticky, and that's the dress code. So I noticed that the ALC has seven points, all spelling out about clothes not being, you know, having vulgar words or advertising something that's illegal to that age group and that kind of thing. And then it goes on to list several bullet points that are more, I don't know, I would call it more like moral standards, instead of just dress that has inappropriate images. And the high school attire is just a very small section, and it doesn't have all the additional bullets about pants that are sagging or midriffs, that kind of thing. But then the middle school goes back to, well, it's very nicely written. And then after a nice section on attire, then it starts listing off those bullet points that are, again, are more, in my opinion, more moral than breaking up the learning environment.
So you're saying, Claudia, try to make sure that those three that have the dress policy, that they are of similar, and you would prefer to see the more streamlined version?
And also, it puts a lot of burden on the teachers then to, you know, check the students out when they really just want to provide their lesson.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Great comments. Other questions, comments? I had one, I had two questions on the high school athletics handbook. One on page 11, where the athletes have to be in class for four hours if they are to compete or practice that day. It indicates it has to be the last four periods of the day, and I'm just wondering what the thinking is around that.
I believe Joel Olson is on the call. So Joel, would you want to weigh in on that? I believe Joel Olson is on the call, so Joel, would you want to weigh in on that?
The original, two years ago it was, had to be in school four hours. Kids were coming to school second hour, leaving fourth hour, coming back fifth hour, weren't consistently in school, so we tried to make it more consistent where they need to be in school the last four hours. And actually, we're talking even recently, and now that that's kind of been what we've been doing, to even say that they need to be in class all day long, there's really no reason for them to have to be out of school half a day before a competition.
Would there be some exemption or, or an excused absence in order to compete or practice if it was a doctor's appointment, or something like that, sort of as a portion of the day? It just can't exceed four hours?
Those are already in there, excused absences like doctors, or
Okay.
driving tests, college visits, things like that.
Okay, excellent, then why, you're here, the page eighteen, it talks about team gatherings, and it says they can only be done under the supervision of a coach. I understand the intent there, but I'm wondering if, you know, is it, is it, is there any, is it problematic if the softball team all decides to go get ice cream after a game, and certainly can't expect a coach to go to that, or maybe if a parent hosts a, you know, team, team dinner after a practice, how what the thinking is there, and if it has shown to be problematic if there's informal gatherings or parent sponsored ones?
Probably the, the word that should be in there would be on school grounds. And that's, that's not the captain's practice piece, is it?
No, it's, it's the initiations and team gatherings part, Joel.
Yeah, so, so initiations is more about, you know, like the hazing, and, you know, back in the day, and maybe even some schools, you know, that happens still, but you know, to, if there's going to be any kind of meeting, or, or something like that, that a coach should be present. But that probably is more in tune with, like we said, initiations, hazing, things like that, there is no, no problem with kids getting together after a game on their own, or with a parent, or at a house, things like that, so that could probably be tweaked a little bit, that language.
Oh, I, and I understand the intent, for sure, I'm just wondering in practice if it gets a little problematic for sort of any any potential conflict with some informal type team gatherings.
No, we've never had any, we've never said no, because we, once a practice is over with, and the coach, you know, their responsibilities are completed for the day, you know, kids, kids do gather at homes, and Applebee's, and things like that, so definitely informal, and maybe we need to kind of separate that language out a little bit, that even just take that out of there, and make sure we're really focused on that other piece of, whether it's at school, you know, captain's practices, maybe those things all can be kind of put together.
Okay, thank you. Those were the only questions I had, so I think then we can move on, if, again, this is first reading, so we will approve these at our June fourteenth board meeting. So we can move on now to revised twenty-one, twenty-two, and proposed twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so the, we have two calendars that we're bringing for you for consideration, not asking you to approve them tonight. So typically, as you know, we are two years ahead on our calendar adoption process. So a few years ago, we adopted two calendars at once, so that we are always adopting a calendar for two years out. Of course, the pandemic has taught us a number of different things, and one of the things that we learned at the beginning of the pandemic, you might recall that we held four days of family conferences at the beginning of the year, where parents had an opportunity to come in and schedule time with a teacher, to really be able to establish that strong relationship at the beginning of the school year. And we had just universal excellent feedback, I've shared some of that feedback with you in the past. We took four days, because with the pandemic, there were quite a few things that we wanted to go through with parents, we wanted to make sure, it was also, if you recall, it was a kind of a later in the summer kind of change that we made to really try to support people as we came back to a school year that we really didn't know exactly how it was going to go. But the value that we found in that was so striking, that we would like to make it something that's permanent. Now, the key thing is that as we have done analysis, we don't believe that we need four days to do that, right, this was a special year. As we look at what we think is reasonable, we think that we can get those important family connections done in the first two days of what would have traditionally been the start of the school year. So we are proposing, in both of these calendars, to have the first, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and the Wednesday after Labor Day, to be teacher, teacher contract days, but where they are focused on meeting with families. It will allow us to create that relationship at the beginning of the year, and one of the things that the pandemic has taught us is that we can use technology in a way to connect with parents more so than ever before, I think there were some perceptions about how technology could be used beyond just a telephone call with parents, we think starting the year in person with people and getting to know them is the best way to start, we think that by doing that, as we have more routine communications, and as how we do parent teacher conferences and other things like that continue to evolve with Zoom becoming so much more accessible for families across all spectrums, starting the year with that personal connection is really important. Now, to get there on these two calendars, we have to find some days, right, we can't add days to the teaching contract. So what we've done is we've looked at, we have a hundred and eighty-seven total teacher contract days. To get these two days for the beginning of the year, we took one day from the four days allotted for parent teacher conferences during the whole year, so rather than having them all concentrated in the fall, you know, the, the late fall and the spring, we're taking one of those days and putting it right at the beginning of the year. The other thing we're doing is we're proposing reducing the number of instructional days from one hundred and seventy-four to one hundred and seventy-three, that accounts for that other day at the beginning of the year, because we have to find those two days somewhere. If you think about it, as we continue to move forward, with, for example, we used to have to really think about snow days. Now, we're still thinking about snow days, we were a pilot in doing e-learning days, if you recall. So that spectrum of having a tremendous amount of snow days hanging over our head is just not there anymore, we have the technology to be able to deliver that, we do have the first two days still are not rescheduled, but it doesn't dramatically impact our ability to meet the state, you know, minimum number of days. And at a hundred and seventy-three student contact is, we think that one day that we're giving to the front to create those relationships with parents will really yield us some tremendous growth that we probably, it would be, it's a, it's, we're looking at it as a trade-off to that instructional day, if we can have a true partnership with families, what we've learned is if we can have a true partnership with families, we will get more out of the student when they're here, because they know that there's that kind of partnership between the school and home. So I am asking you to take a look at both of these, the first one, the twenty-one, twenty-two, it's a minor modification, right, just, we are not changing spring break, we're, the only changes are the actual first day of students being in school, and then we did have to move the last day of school back one day, right, so it's, it's going ahead one day, so as opposed to getting out of school on Wednesday, we're getting out on Thursday. So a fairly minor modification to the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar, we did not want to make a, a change on spring break, or anything that families may have already planned, but we think that this is a good way, we know that once Labor Day hits, we know that people are ready to go on that first day, if they're not, they, sometimes when we hold these kinds of things before the start of the school year, parents are still on vacation, parents are still using all of August, right before they come back. So that twenty-one, twenty-two is a fairly minor modification that we would ask you to approve the update at the next meeting. And then you'll see that the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar looks very similar, and again, we are looking at starting with those first two days of the school year being family conferences, so that's the proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, questions or comments, board members have, Amy?
So in general, I'm very excited about this idea, but I have some questions that might be kind of early to be asking these questions, but I imagine as the years go by, it'll be important to keep this fresh for parents, like if you're a parent of a fourth or fifth grader, and you've already done it four times before, there's going to have to be something special that will make you want to go in to see another teacher, other than just meeting, the teacher's important, but and not all parents are that engaged in their kids' education, so just something to think about.
Well, I'll share with you that I have data around this, because for a number of years, for actually probably the last eight years, we've done something similar for elementary students, but we've done it during the workshop, it was called Ready, Set, Go Day. And Ready, Set, Go Day, we have near one hundred percent attendance, and over a number of different years, it's in the high ninety percentages. And at the elementary school level, the big difference, right, is the fact that we, I'm, my child is coming with me to school, they may do some assessments, they are bringing their school supplies, because this is in place of an open house. So at the elementary level, Amy, we have experience with this over probably the last six, seven years, and we have had incredibly high attendance with very few people who do not show up. So I can assure you that it's kept fresh enough to where people come back each year in that case.
Well, that's great, that's exciting, and then similarly, high school students, where they have so many, or middle school, where they have so many teachers, you might have to be innovative in how you approach that, or would you just have everybody meet with the first hour teachers, or you'll have to figure all that out.
Yep, and I, and talking with both the middle school and high school, they have a couple of different ways that they have, are potentially looking at this, you know, last year, everyone met with one teacher, because there were some specific things that were being instructed about how this school year was going to roll, so you, you actually, as a parent, got to pick the teacher that you signed up with, so people had that choice of which of my child's teachers do I sign up with. There are some other ways that we've done some of these kinds of things in the past, and doing them a, a couple of different times during the school day, or doing a, a regular day could be helpful. In the past, both the middle school and high school have done events where you actually follow your child's schedule for a shortened, so it might be a, a ten-minute period, or a fifteen-minute period, where then the teacher provides, you know, an overview of the syllabus, and here's how, so there are a number of different ways that the middle school and high school are looking at this, but we also know that the value of creating those relationships and having met people upfront, and you could even do some kind of partial models, where part of it is you are meeting, you know, with each of your teachers, and that kind of follow the schedule. Then we're also looking at how do we create some value-add kinds of things, so we may have some areas where you can go, my child's going into senior year, what are the kinds of things that they have to do during senior year to be on track for selecting their career or college pathway, you know, after high school? As a junior, it could be talking about financial aid, and so the, the high school and the middle school have both, I, I think you have a more significant interest to making sure people are at middle school, just because of the, of the timing of that with students in their academic career, and then those value-add pieces at the high school are things that we believe will bring people into campus.
That all sounds great, and I, it'll be interesting to see, I, I have two more questions, and one is sort of a question statement, as I assume that there'll be some evening hours available, and not everything will be strictly during the school day, because not all parents can find time during the school day.
So possibly, so part of what we deal with on, on those days is we can move the day by up to a couple of hours. But we have been very successful in the past with our elementary families, of getting a very high percentage of people to come in on one day, and now that we have two days to be able to work through that, we think we have an even better chance to get everybody there, so we have been successful with it in the past, we have a limited ability to change those hours during that day, so that is something we will certainly explore further.
Okay, and my last kind of question comment is that is the week right before the feet of Jesse James Days, and now there's the two, two fewer days to sort of settle the kids into school, and then they go off into this festival, and I don't know how a change in, I'm not saying it's worth not doing this, but it's just something to think about, that Jesse James, defeat of Jesse James Days is an important part of Northfield culture, and that happens after the second day of school, and a lot of the kids participate in the festival, and the parade, or, you know, in other ways are part of the festival, so there'll be that distraction happening, too.
And some of the feedback that we've gotten is that that, having a shorter week that week might actually be advantageous, because anyone who has had their own children in school know that that first week is exhausting, right, I don't, I don't care how old you are, right, your first, so actually, we think those first couple of days to get into some of the routines and those kinds of things, but not having that full week because of what you're talking about, possibly could make that a less tiring experience for families.
Great, and I realize I have one more comment, and that is on the twenty-two, twenty-three year, I noticed that the spring break is later, again, back to how it has been in the past, and I think that's great, actually, but I'm wondering if we go through and we're, you know, if we approve these next week, are we then officially approving making the break later again, or?
Correct.
All right, so this twenty-one, twenty-two is just a one, one-off to give it a shot?
Correct, there was some, there was some talk, as we worked through the development of that calendar, of looking at possibly something a little bit different. We enacted that with, working through with the teacher meet and confer committee, and considering a variety of different pieces to try something different, and let's just say that the feedback has been what we suggested in the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar.
Yes, that's what I've heard, too, so, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, other questions, comments, Cory, and then I'll, I see you, Tom, as well.
I was going to ask for spring break, too, but thank you for asking that, because I was kind of curious, having not been on the board, last year it was approved, why it was moved up to the early part of March. I do have a question, this might be more for Erin, those additional days after Labor Day, can you talk a little bit about the gap between childcare for summer programming and the beginning of school? I know that's a struggle for some families, because a lot of places closed down at the end of August to clean, for students to come back in the fall. Is there any concern, or has there been discussions about what two additional days of no contact would do for some families?
That's a good question, Cory, and as this discussion was happening, I was trying to remember what we did last fall, you think I could remember back all the way there, but I can't. Matt, do you remember, did we offer childcare last fall, or Sarah?
I'm fairly sure we did offer childcare
I think we did, too, in which case Cory will offer it again. We would just offer, like, what would be our typical release day for kid ventures, we would just do that sort of programming, and we'd have a space, depending on how many registered, and what the public health data would look like, we would either have hosted at one site, which is typically easier for us, in, as, in terms of staffing needs, or we could do it at multiple sites, too. And we used EA, is correct, Sarah, is that?
Sarah, yeah, so last, this past school year, we were required to provide emergency childcare due to the emergency orders related to the pandemic and the safe learning plan, on any previously scheduled, or regularly scheduled, school days that were changed or altered due to the pandemic, and our plans changed to address the needs of the, of the families and students, and so we did offer the emergency childcare on those two days.
Thank you, Sarah, I, I felt like that was what happened, but it, it was a crazy start to the year, so I couldn't remember, in which case, too, Cory, it does allow, it does provide work hours for some of our staff then, too, that when we don't have students on site, may have less to do, or less hours, too, so that, that's a, those staff can come in, and be useful in that setting, too.
Thank you.
Tom, question or comment you had?
Yeah, not to go into the details about conferences, but it was handy, and in the high school, to be able to zoom a conference, and schedule the three or four teachers all in a row, and be able to maybe do it from work, or, or something, is that especially for like the high school, maybe even the middle school, I can see in there earlier, the elementary, where you want personal contact, but is, is the Zoom part going to be part of it?
Absolutely, and we have been for a long time wanting to think differently about how we handle parent teacher conferences. Again, following the same pattern as the Ready, Set, Go Day, we have an incredibly high percentage of elementary families that participate in conferences. You've got one teacher, right, it's at a scheduled time, you can really plan around it, and in the previous model of how we did middle school and high school, you know, there wasn't the ability to schedule it, there wasn't, and so there was, I think some people came there because they, they wouldn't come, because they were worried, could they even see, you know, all of their teachers? So as we get through this year, one of the things that's on our agenda for talking about for next year is thinking really differently about conferences, and we had that conversation with And we had that conversation with the meet and confer committee. Conferences aren't really part of the calendar, right? That's an administrative role of setting when those conferences are. They work with building level teacher leadership teams about when are conferences held and what are the format for them? Because we do a variety of different things, offer a couple of times where you might go to a teacher's room at the secondary or you might have the cafeteria style, if you will. There are strengths and challenges to both of those, right? If you are waiting for someone outside of a classroom, people aren't as careful, you might overhear that conversation. If you stay extra long in the, in the cafeteria style, you know, people get impatient about wait. So I, we are evolving this and we know that so many of our families now have the ability to do the Zoom piece. And so we will of course, offer the opportunities for people who want to be person in person, but also expanding and opening. And then the question becomes, does there have to be a single day for it, right? We're thinking through, now that takes some thought around past practices about how we have looked at those work hours, right? And they usually fit nice and neatly on one day. So we're exploring if we were to look at these things differently, how can we do that while making sure that the community, you know, is that we are held to account as the organization to make sure those hours are fulfilled and how do we best use them? But it is, we're actually quite excited about the changes that are coming to parent teacher conferences. But I really think it's kicked off with these in-person family conferences. And we will also offer some Zoom family conferences for people who absolutely can't, you know, get there. But we're really trying to create that personal relationship with people to start the year.
Great question, Tom. Other questions, comments? I, I really appreciate this being brought forward. I think we talked about how, what we learned, you know, and how we evolve. And as the board representative on meet and confer, the, the, those on the NEA committee really talked at length about how valuable they thought this time was. And I think we spend so much time talking about how we create those connections and we have this opportunity here. And, and so I think it, I think it's, it's really important that we, that we move forward with this. And I know we'll vote on it at the next meeting. But my question too then is because this is coming late, of course, for families, we'll be approving it in June. And we're talking about a change to a September calendar. I'm assuming we'll roll out all our typical and usual forms of communication to, to let families know about the change.
We will make it hard for you to turn around without seeing it.
Okay. That's all we can ask. Okay, great. So we will then have the revised calendars, well, the revised 2021, 22, and then the proposed 22, 23 calendar on item for individual action at the next board meeting. And then just as a reminder, Amy, I appreciate you pointing out 22, 23 will not just be those first day, two days, but will encompass approving all of the, that entire calendar as we have not done that yet. Okay. So we can move on to the semi, semi-annual fundraising report. In compliance with policy 713, we have Director Murdistorf with us actually today.
So we're gonna ask Val to use Noel's microphone here.
Good evening. Sorry about the microphone. This is sort of a last minute switch for, for me today. But so this is the, the semi-annual fundraising report. And as you can see, there's a handful of fundraisers that have been going on and are, some are still wrapping up currently. So there's just really, it's pretty, pretty consistent with what we've seen historically. There are, last year, obviously there were not very many happening at this time. I think we had one maybe on our list last year, but they're typically ongoing and just supporting team gear and various things that support their programs. I am going to recommend that we switch the, the times that are listed in the policy because it suggests November and May. And I'm going to suggest that we do like January and July, so then we can have a complete six months. There are a lot of fundraisers that finish up right at the end of the school year. So this, this was the model, the model policy that we adopted. And I, I'll make that recommendation moving forward and we can look at that. But the, the timing doesn't quite line up because they're not complete. But I would welcome any questions that you have about the, the current fundraisers that we had.
Thank you, Val. And it is really good to have you here in person. Any questions, comments? Fundraising report. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Val. Okay, we can move on to pay equity report. Dr. Hillman.
Yes. So in your hand, in your packet, I had to hand out governing the pay, or explaining the pay equity report update. So in January, this board approved the submission of the pay equity report. That's a report that we have to submit to the state every three years. And there are three tests that employers in Minnesota must pass. There's a salary range test. There's a statistical analysis test that is an exceptional pay test. And in this time, which we had predicted, the district did not pass the salary range test. So what the salary range test does is it tests what is the length of time that it takes female dominated classes to get to their top pay? And compares that to the length of time it takes male dominated employee classes to get to their top pay. And the issue that we have is that we have several collectively bargained units within our district. In fact, our pay equity consultant Kathleen Murphy, who is the dean of this group, she's been doing pay equity work since it was implemented. Very good, very skilled. The last time around, we made a case that it was, it was not a gender-related issue, but rather a collectively bargained issue. Here's the crux of the issue. Our teachers association has the most steps of any of the collectively bar, of any of the groups in the school district at 15 steps. Most of our other groups have a total of five or six steps. We like those five or six steps and things like custodians and other agreements because, or those smaller number of steps. Because people don't come and stay, right, at a job like they used to for 30 or 35 years in some of those roles. So we are able to recruit people because they are able to get to their top salary fairly quickly, right? Compared to how we would have done before. So it, this time around, we were not able to make enough gains in any of the things that we worked on in the last couple of years to where we could make a difference in this test. So we can either increase the number of steps for those groups that have a smaller number of steps or we can reduce the number of steps that we have in those larger female dominated classes. And so we are, as you know, are in negotiations with the Northfield Education Association. And we are going to work with the association to try to bring our number of steps into where we would be able to pass that test. Again, this is clearly just about the fact that different groups have bargained different things over the years. It's no, there's no intentional piece to create the split. It's actually not all that uncommon for public entities to struggle with this particular test. The other thing that pay equity reports can do, there are tripwire. Every couple of years, we take a look at all of our salaries and all of our pay equity points. And we try to make sure that we have a general correlation between those. And not everything is going to be perfect. There are some positions, for example, that may be governed more by the market for their particular position in that timeframe than in other timeframes. But we did discover there are four administrative employees whose salaries were quite a bit below the expected salary range. And we were initially really surprised by it, but we looked at what had happened and we understand how it took place. For people who have been on the board for a period of time, you remember that there was a position that I held in the district for several years called Director of Administrative Services. And that position oversaw all of the back office functions of the school system. When I became the superintendent, we were looking at some potential budget reductions. And so we sunsat that position and we provided additional responsibilities to the directors of finance and human resources. We changed the salaries at that time and then adjusted the points. And it just happens that it coincided after our last pay equity report. And while we gave those positions an increase, we did not give them an increase big enough compared to their new responsibilities. So while this did not have us fail a test this time, what we know is that it is out of line. And there are two other positions, the Director of Instructional Services and the Director of Special Services. There are a similar number of points. What we're trying to do is correct this now because we do not want it to continue to go forward. We believe it would cause us to potentially fail one of the other tests, the statistical analysis test the next time. And when the pay equity report uncovers something like this, we take care of it. So I'm not asking you to approve these modifications this evening, but I will be asking to approve them at the next meeting. And then the other part is that when we look across our competitors, other school districts for these positions, this will also bring us into a much more comparable range when we judge these positions across their counterparts throughout the region. And I know that we all know we have excellent people in these positions. And we want to make sure that we're paying people both fairly and then competitively within the region. So this is something that I'm bringing to you for your consideration and I'll ask you to vote on it at the next meeting. We will not vote on the steps for the first part that I mentioned, but we will ask about these salary adjustments at the, at the next meeting.
Thank you. So just one point of clarification, as I recall, you said that these new proposed salaries are in the current budget, correct?
They are, they are anticipated as part of the current budget. Yes.
Okay. So other questions or comments? Okay. We can move on now to what we affectionately refer to as all things COVID. Dr. Hillman.
Yes. So in your packet here today, what we have is just again, reviewing the data. We continue to see the Rice County data decrease, which is good, right? The number of cases and the county rate continues to decrease over the last several weeks. And what you'll see is I've provided you the three averages or the averages for the influenza-like illness. You'll see that those numbers still are looking very good for those weekly averages. The quarantine average, again, that quarantine averages you mentioned, as I've mentioned before, can swing, especially at the elementary schools. So late last week, our average for last week at one of our elementary schools was at 10%. And that's because we had a couple of classrooms who are out, this is updated data beyond what I've got in the packet. And then coming back early this week, that's drops, it's gonna drop significantly as one class or two come back. And so that quarantine average will again, looks a little bit more, it has greater swings at the elementary schools. Because if there's a case at the elementary schools, in most cases, that entire classroom goes out. So we are still doing very well according to the data that we have. I shared with you that in the next part here, looking at the county case rate, so you'll see that. Again, we've seen a four week, a week over week decrease. Then on the second page, I have given you the latest updates around vaccination in Rice County. We've got at least six, as of May 17th, we had 61.6% of 16 and older folks with at least one dose of the vaccine. A little more than half with a completed vaccination series. The other thing that we're working with Rice County on is to try to get by zip code, how many 16 and 17-year-olds have been vaccinated? So we know we have roughly 716 and 17-year-olds in the Northfield Public School District between our schools, right? And our schools, the ALC, the Northfield High School and Arcadia. And what we know is the latest data indicates that 302 16 and 17-year-olds who reside in the Northfield zip code have at least one dose of the vaccine. And we're continuing to work with other entities. So we're currently working, we are working with Alina Clinic when I published this to have a vaccination clinic targeting 16 and 17-year-olds at the NCEC. Unfortunately, Alina is now saying they're gonna need to have that for a variety of different reasons at their clinic. They're still gonna have a clinic that's gonna focus on 16 and 17-year-olds. I contacted John Benjamin, the owner of Northfield Lines, and asked him if he would consider donating transportation from various neighborhoods on that day, so that if there are people who needed transportation, he has graciously agreed to do that. So when we target these 16 and 17-year-olds, it's most likely gonna be a Saturday clinic. We are gonna be able to have some bus routes. They're gonna be able to help people get to the clinic and get home to try to make sure that this is accessible for everyone. And then I also want to share with you that last Sunday, well, May 16th, a week ago Sunday, we did hold a parent webinar about vaccination for children. We know that when we're talking about a new vaccine with your own children, there might be a lot of questions. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Kyle Hoffer and Dr. Ben Flannery, local physicians who spoke for about 20 or so minutes. We had about 25 minutes worth of questions. We had approximately 20 people who attended the webinar. We did record it. We're preparing to post that so other people can watch it. But we're really trying to make sure, and actually the physicians had come to us and said they're really trying to dispel some of the misinformation about vaccines. And we've made it abundantly clear, the school district, we are not telling people whether or not they should get a vaccine. That's a family choice. That's your own individual choice about your health. As I've said many times, the school district can leverage its convening power to help people make connections. So we are trying to help make, help people have connections. If I want a vaccine, where can we go to get it? In the early days, or the early days, just a month and a half ago, we are connecting people with Vaccine Spotter. And we were seeing kids that were going to Cassin and to Wasik and other places to get the Pfizer vaccine. We now have a resource guide that Anita Ozzy put together for us so that you can find, how do I make an appointment at the Alina Clinic? How do I make an appointment at Northfield Hospital and clinics? How do I go on to the Vaccine Spotter to find other pharmacies that might have the Pfizer vaccine? So again, we are simply trying to be the connectors and to make sure that people are educated about what do medical experts, people who we know in our own community, Dr. Hoffer and Dr. Flannery, say about the vaccine? And be able to answer questions and have a dialogue about it. So we were excited to be able to have that and that we had 20 people, somebody, well, you only had 20 people. I'll tell you, 20 people, if they all tell four people and they tell four, I mean, before you know it, we really have made an impact. So we also did offer, as we do for all of our webinars, we offered live Spanish translation. Marval de Cantos, who traditionally does our district written interpretation. It's a very cool thing that we use with Zoom where people can select their language and they go into a special part of Zoom where they can still hear the speaker in English speaking, so they can make out tone and things like that. But the interpreter is actually then hearing, they're hearing what the folks are saying in the English speaking room. And then they're able to translate it to our Spanish-speaking family. So it's a very exciting piece of technology that we're using that's built into our Zoom platform. So that, again, trying to make sure that we are, and we did have several people who used the Spanish room that evening. So that's really a, a good move forward. Finally, what I want to share is that a little bit of a graduation update. And again, we're getting some additional guidance from the state, what seems like weekly, we're back into getting the guidance weekly again. But what we're very excited to share is that the latest changes to the COVID-19 protocols allow for increased graduation at Northfield High School on June 6th for graduation there and for the ALC graduation on June 3rd. And we will no longer need to limit attendance based on COVID-19 restrictions. And now, at this point, our understanding has been that because there are going to be more than 500 people in attendance at the Northfield High School graduation and because the ALC graduation has been moved inside, we believe that both of those events would require masks based on state guidelines. We're also hearing about, we just got some new state guidelines last week around masks and outdoor events that we are reviewing to see if that has been changed even further. And again, it wouldn't be more restrictive. It would actually allow less masking to happen. So we're working through that so that we can, we've said all along, we're gonna follow the guidance and that's what our plan is to do. The high school has decided that they are gonna stick with their rain date of June 7th. For those of you who may know the history, when we can't, we have often done, well, we do our graduation outside every year. If there's a weather issue, we have typically then moved into the high school. Because that will be a real challenge for that many people who are coming. The high school has decided to stick with their rain date this year as opposed to try to move it inside. The area learning center, because they have so many fewer people, they're gonna be able to meet the criteria to where they are able to be able to be inside in the high school auditorium like they normally are. And so again, the change in the rules are such that we are able to keep that going. So I just wanted to share those changes and grad, this is really good news, right? Because we are seeing, we are continuing to see an improvement in the public health situation that is starting for us to feel a little bit back to our, I'm remiss and that I should have announced at the beginning. I can't believe we forgot this. I, and this was one of those COVID moments that was actually pure joy for me. We ran a rock and roll revival outside. We got three nights of fairly good weather. It was, it was going to be limited seating. But the evening that I went was just after the governor changed the rules. There were less than 500 people there, so most of the people there were outdoor and unmasked. And to see the joy on people's face, faces of that simple act of being outside and watching children perform music was something that I will not ever forget in my entire life. There's a lot of things in the pandemic that I will not forget and most of them are not great. This is one that I will remember for the rest of my life of just this whole, I don't know how to describe this, this sense of community and relief that we heard. So we still have a long way to go with the pandemic. We still have many hurdles in front of us. We still need to be judicious, right? And follow reasonable guidelines and be intelligent about how we relax our protocols. But better days are not only ahead, they are here. And so we're very excited that hopefully we are seeing our ability to turn the corner very soon. So that's my COVID report for this evening.
Excellent report. Thank you. And incredible work, right? Questions, comments board members have? Amy?
First, I want to say I went to the Rock and Roll Revival this year too, and it was great. And the students all had that chance to live their dream, which if you haven't had a kid in the musical department at the high school, you may not understand how important it is to these students. But it was just, they did a phenomenal job and it was outside and it was really fun. So thanks to Ray Gudray and Bob Grobry-Briarclin and Sherry.
Satchel.
Satchel and all the people involved for making that happen. But on back to your COVID report. So I want to thank you for working with Alina to do a clinic for 16 and 17 year olds. I have some questions about that. So is it going to be an appointment clinic or a walk-in clinic, you know?
So what we've learned is that there's, you want to do a combination. So my understanding is that there's going to most likely be a combination. So when we held the clinic for Rice County, we did have some pre-registered appointments, but we also encouraged walk-ins, right? So we are anticipating that that would be a similar piece with Alina, though all, we don't have all of the details for that clinic worked out yet. So part of that is we're working hard with Alina to make it available to as many people as possible. So we will certainly encourage Alina to allow walk-ins and that would be something through using the bus system, you know, that we're looking at would also allow people to come in. Of course, because these are 16 and 17 year olds, we need to have parent permission. This is one of the pieces that we're, it's clearly we're not, they need to have parent permission to be able to complete it. And so that is part of that process as well. So it isn't completely walk-in when you're talking about 16 and 17 year, I mean, you just can't have a 16 year old show up and you're going to have to have a parent permission piece, which Alina is responsible for that portion.
Will the parents have to be physically present or will they?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
What if, what if there are 12 to 15 year olds who come by and/or parents that say?
Yes, that's a, that's a fair question. Yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's not just, forgive me, it is going to be for 12 to 15, 12 and up. So it's not just 16, I apologize, that's my error, I've been thinking 16 and 17 year olds for so long. It will be a 12 and up clinic because it's Pfizer and so anybody who qualifies for Pfizer would be able to attend the clinic. I apologize and I correct my previous statement.
If the parents are there and they say, hey, you know, I haven't been vaccinated yet, can I get a vaccination? Will they be eligible?
I, I think that that's going to be up to Alina. I'm not, you know, we aren't, we aren't able to set the criteria for those events, we're simply the connector.
One of the things I've been reading is that some people have vaccine hesitancy because they think they have to pay for the vaccines. So I just want to encourage you as you're promoting this among the students and their families to make sure they understand that it's free.
Correct.
And make that very, very clear. Then my other comment, I wanted to, it was just a question, I'm very excited, graduation is going to be outside. But it reminded me about the class of 2020 and our promise to them that they would have an event as well. And I'm wondering what you're thinking about that.
Well, June 11th is the date for the reunion for the class of 2020. We have sent email messages to all of the families in the class of 2020. We have sent the entire class of 2020 a postcard with a link to register and it's been shared on the class of 2020 parents page. So we have had quite a few, the rule of three, right? We hit you in three times in three different ways. The last count that I had is we had approximately 50 of 2020 graduates who were interested in coming back. We are working, child nutrition is going to cater the event, so there will be a meal. It's going to be a simple event like we had suggested last year, we're going to have a portion of the stage setup where people can do a picture in the cap and gown if they would like. Now, if you recall, we did allow that last year where people could come and do a picture with their cap and gown after the date of graduation, so they could have done that last year, but we're also going to offer it this year. A meal, an opportunity for people to walk the halls and just check in with their friends. So it's a fairly simple event, but we have already started promoting, the last count, we had around 50 people who are going to participate.
Great. I'd love to talk to you offline as an expert and reunion planner, I might have some ideas for you. Thank you.
And I do want to make one correction too, that try not to be, but just on Friday, we got the note that I believe our graduation, based on the latest rules, that there will not be any masking required at our graduation. So on Thursday, when I wrote to you, we thought it was going to be above 500. On, on late Thursday, Friday, we got the note from the Department of Education. Basically, what they're saying is that if your graduation event is outside of the regular school day, right? So it's not during the student contact day that the mask mandate does not apply. And so that's, so if you think about a fifth grade graduation though, right? That takes place during the student day, so then the safe learning plan rules apply. So we are, we are just, that's the word that we are getting out to our parents now. But it's just since I wrote this to you on Thursday, we have different guidance. And it was very clear just before that, that if you were over 500 people and it was a controlled entry event, graduation year. But again, on Friday, we got this information and so please know that that is what our plan is at this point.
That is really.
And I think the principal leader actually shared that with graduate or families today.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions or comments? All right, some really good, good stuff. Thank you for the incredibly hard work. Okay, so we can move on now to next on the agenda is committee reports. And we had a committee report submitted by board member Cory Butler regarding the work of the Legislative Action Committee. Cory?
Yes, we have one more item from the table file.
I'm sorry. How did I miss that? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I am so sorry. Thank you Cory for being on top of it. Okay, I'm sorry. So the additional item for discussion is the request to hire additional license educational occupational therapist. We have tonight with us Sarah Pratt, who is Assistant Director of Student Services. Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we are, the Special Services Office is requesting an additional .5 FTE for the 21, 22 school year of an occupational therapist. Back in early February, you graciously approved a 1.0 FTE increase temporarily for this school year so that we could address the needs that had increased at our early childhood site and kind of work through our workload for our occupational therapists across the district. And following a pretty intense review of that workload and caseloads and projections, we are requesting the .5 FTE for next school year. We believe that will, will meet the needs of the students that we currently have and the students we are projecting based on past practice as far as numbers of initial evaluations that we get in the birth to five program. And I know Cheryl submitted a pretty detailed request with some, lots of information and lots of data. But one of the major things to note, I believe, is that our numbers in our early childhood program are increasing pretty significantly. And currently, we are projected to have a 1.0 FTE at the Early Childhood Center with 77 on the caseload in the fall, up to 77 students. And average regional and state caseloads are 40 to 45. And we also have students moving out of early childhood into our elementary schools, which is also increasing the need to have additional, not additional supports, but to kind of reassign and restructure some of our FTE assignments. So we do believe that the .5 would meet the needs of the students that we currently have and the students we're projecting will come through the early childhood program in the next school year. Any questions?
Thanks, Sarah. Any questions or comments? Sarah, I had a question, then you envision that this would, so this would begin as, as a .5 FTE obviously, and that, that's the basis for the hiring. What are you anticipating the marketplace being, you know, as we know, is challenging with special ed professional or special ed educators and occupational therapists in terms of hiring for this position at a .5?
Tough to tell. You know, just when you think you might not have qualified candidates who are interested in working .5, sometimes we have them, you know, coming out of the woodwork. So we are hoping that we would be able to, you know, attract some people who are interested in a .5 position. And that is our intent to start. And then see what we can find as far as qualified candidates and then come back to the drawing board if need be.
Okay, thank you. Amy, you have a question?
Sarah, is this the sort of position that you need earlier action on it to have it approved sooner? Or can you wait till the next time around? I'm just wondering what you're thinking that way.
You know, I believe we can wait until the next time around. Thank you for the question, Amy. We are posting it for next school year, so I, I believe we could wait. Earlier action would allow us to post sooner and potentially get candidates who may have not committed yet to another job. But it's not urgent, like we've had positions in the past where the students are already here and we're not meeting their needs. This is really projecting for next school year.
I know with special education, there's even a larger shortage in those teachers. And I just want to make sure we give you every opportunity to get a person in the position.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that.
So Sarah, would it would be, would it be helpful to be able to move on this faster, I think is really, and I'm hearing you say that that, that would be helpful?
It would be helpful, yes. I, you know, if people are comfortable with that, but it, it's not urgently necessary, if that helps.
Well, with that in mind, I'd like to move that we take this and move it to early action and vote on it today, if that's a possibility.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to approve the approval of a .5 FTE for special education occupational therapist for the 21, 22 school year as an item for individual action.
So we're not voting on it right now, we're just voting to move it to individual action.
Item for individual action. Is there a second? Second by Cory. Any questions or comments?
I, I just want to say I appreciate, you know, this is something that came to us in the table file because of the fact that we are working on the data all the way through the end of last week. And as you know, we don't, we very rarely ask you to approve something in the same evening that we bring it to because we really want to make sure that people have an opportunity to think it through. I think in this case, I appreciate Amy that you are bringing it forward for the possibility because it will help us be able to have a more competitive opportunity to get people in May rather than middle, the middle of June. And it's less than what you've already approved, right? You would approve this for the second half of the year, it's even less than what you had approved previously. So I appreciate that consideration. Again, we don't ask you to do that very often, but I appreciate you seeing the need and offering to do that this evening.
Yes, we understand the circumstances around this for sure. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, we'll have it for an item for individual action. Sarah, I'm not sure if you are planning to stay with the meeting, but we certainly always take the opportunity when, when people are here with us to thank you for your incredible efforts. I mean, the challenges around the pandemic and particularly within special education and the services that you provide students and the support you provide families is just, your efforts have been incredible and we are so grateful and we know you are likely exhausted. And we hope that the school year will end, you know, it will continue to progress in such a positive way and that, you know, you'll make it to the finish line, so to speak.
Well, thank you. Very much appreciate that. And it, it has been a challenging year, but it has also been a very rewarding year. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so we will address that then as an item for individual action. And thank you Cory for catching that for me. So now we will move on to committee report Cory on Legislative Action Committee.
Thank you Julie. I'll give an abbreviated version of what I submitted. I realize I wrote a lot, probably more than the bullet points Julie suggested I wrote, but there's a lot to catch up on. For those who not, who are not following the news, legislature adjourned last Monday at their mandated deadline. They did not have a budget bill in place, which is unfortunate, but they did in the 11th hour, put together some numbers they want to work off, broad numbers for target numbers. It's a good news, bad news situation for us, $525 million pledged in new money for schools, which is closer to the House suggested $772 million. The Senate has just $152 million, so that's positive news. We don't know what that money means necessarily, how it will be doled out for the formula or for other areas, so that remains to be seen. Legislative leaders and Governor Walz will continue to work in the next week or so. I think they have a deadline Friday to work out a lot of the details and I think a policy deadline from two weeks from now, with the hopes that they will approve something by mid-June. So in the interim, the Legislative Action Committee and Superintendent Hillman are reaching out to our legislators, both locally and those involved in negotiations to advocate for students in the E12 systems. And we're hoping to get as much as we can to be helpful for stability and growth in our schools. So we'll continue to knock on doors and email and call in the coming weeks.
Excellent report Cory. I do, I really like the way you broke down, you know, the action that's occurred and, and the targets that are out there. Questions or comments anyone has or Legislative Action Committee members want to weigh in or Dr. Hillman?
I'll defer to others to begin with. Yeah, I, I think Cory really summed it up, that we are focused on making sure that we're advocating for at least 2% in each year of the, of the, of the biennium on the basic formula. And again, as Cory pointed out, that's around $400 million. And so we are focusing all of our efforts right now on that to make sure that that happens. That's the big part. And the good news is that we did see some, some compromise and that we do have hope that this agreement will get completed before the end of the fiscal year anyway, so that it can really help us as we finalize pieces moving into next school year. So we're excited about that. We will see, of course, at the end of the day, there's a lot of things to be worked out and you get into a special session and you never know what can happen.
Excellent. Thanks Cory for the report and Legislative Action Committee. It's been great to work with Claudia and Cory and myself and Dr. Hillman to truly try to, to influence and advocate where we can on, on behalf of Northfield Schools and really students statewide. So thank you for that report Cory. Does anyone have any questions then? Yeah, I realize I didn't ask that. So we can move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Cory. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for individual action. Our first item for individual action this evening is the contract between Northfield Public Schools and Prairie Creek Community School. And with us tonight is Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School.
Yeah, so before you this evening, we're asking for approval of another five-year agreement with Prairie Creek Community School. You have seen the contract once before. We submitted the contract for the Minnesota, to the Minnesota Department of Education for their review. They do that for us so that we can make sure that the contract is in statutory compliance. There was one issue that they found, really believe Simon was around the lottery component that you use for Prairie Creek. And we updated that to come into alignment with the latest statutory requirements. We resubmitted it to the Department of Ed and last week, we got the good news that they would say, yes, this contract would meet statute. We always like to make sure that that's the case before we submit it to you for final approval. So we're asking that you approve this tonight. And then I believe Simon's board is going to approve it later this week, if I'm correct, Simon?
That's correct, Dr. Hillman.
Very proud to continue our relationship with Prairie Creek Community School. So Simon, did you have any comments before a motion is made?
No, I'd just like to thank you, Dr. Hillman and the Northfield School Board for your collaboration in working on this contract. I've, I've been through two cycles of contracts with the Northfield District. We, we, we know we're really fortunate to have this relationship with the local district as our offerizer. It's not every charter school's experience, our board greatly values it. And I think we're just really excited to enter into another five years of relationship and, and work with you all.
Excellent. Thank you, Simon. So I'll entertain a motion, so is there a motion to approve the new contract between Northfield Public Schools and Prairie Creek Community School for the timeframe July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026? Moved by Cory, is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments? Amy?
I just have to say Prairie Creek will always have a special place in my heart and I'm happy that we can. I just have to say Prairie Creek will always have a special place in my heart and I'm happy that we can continue to support them in this way.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, and Simon, we we also very much value and are really proud that we can support our district's charter schools. And we appreciate the collaborative and and amazing and incredible relationship you have with with us. And the first and foremost, the great work you do on behalf of all your students. So we're really proud to be able to do this. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Simon.
Thank you all.
Hey, we'll move on now to the high school raider mascot. Dr. Hillman, did you have any initial comments you wanted to make? Otherwise, I do have some comments as well.
Yeah, I think that I'll go ahead and let you start with your, I would just say that we are bringing forth the final part of this process that we set back in October. Remember, our students came to us a year ago talking to us about the raider mascot. And so we have followed a process that has gotten us to this point. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of iterations. And so I just, we're, we are happy to have it at this point in the discussion for you this evening.
Okay, so normally I, you know, we we particularly an item for individual action. We we have a motion, we have an item, two items for individual action tonight this evening regarding the raider mascot. And before we begin the process of voting on tonight's two motions, I did want to recap a little bit about how we got there. And then I've also done some reflection on our board meeting discuss discussions. And I have some additional thoughts I wanted to share, which I prepared so I would be sure I was succinct. So before we begin to discussion, I want to recap how we got to where we are this evening. That is to replace the current rest raider mascot and to vote on a new mascot design. At a board meeting in early twenty twenty, we heard during public comment from a representative of Northfield High School Student Council. They expressed that the students felt the current raider mascot no longer represented who they are. As a result, in late twenty twenty, seated board members at the time determined to proceed with a mascot refresh. They set the parameters for a committee of district stakeholders to create a new mascot design. One of the approved parameters is a mascot would personify the townspeople who heroically defended against the James Younger gang. Despite our best intentions and our committee's incredible efforts, there is no question in my mind and others that the proposed mascot would be seen as depicting an outlaw. The raider name, if viewed in the historical context of the bank raid, is an outlaw. Yet our mascot is attempting to be one of the good guys. During this process, the board has discussed the raider name with some members expressing discomfort with the names association to the violent outlaws of the James Younger gang. We have acknowledged changing the name would be controversial, but why is that? I believe the raider name for our schools has in many ways transcended its historical context. There is an undeniable sense of pride, energy and strong school connectivity to the raider name has in this community. Being a raider has an emotional tie that spans generation and is built on their wonderful memories of growing up in Northfield. Being a raider holds a special place in their hearts. As a district, we celebrate our efforts to bring our school to meet, community together. As Raider Nation, we witness our students compete with intensity, integrity and raider pride. In recent years, the raider mascot has rarely been used. With board action tonight, we can retire the current mascot and then we can decide not to replace it. I believe the strong character and spirit of our Northfield Raider students is one that we cannot easily personify. Prior to nineteen fifty six, generations of Raider alums attended Northfield Schools when no mascot existed. In fact, there's currently five NFL teams who do not have a mascot. Most notable is the Green Bay Packers. The large G on their helmet is their recognizable logo. The ubiquitous Northfield N, a strong identifiable logo for our school, is one that we know is very popular. Admittedly, at this junction, juncture, a change in the direction by the board requires strong leadership. We give credit to the committee's invaluable work, community input and thoughtful board discussion. That has given us insight we didn't previously have nor could have gained without it. We began this process with the goal of achieving a change. If we take action tonight to retire the current mascot and to not replace it at this time. We are achieving both a change and potentially an even more positive outcome than we initially envisioned. So those are my thoughts. I, again, a little bit of a departure would like to open up now just some discussion by board members. Because we do have two motions and then we would move to the motions for individual action. So questions, comments, discussion from board members? Amy?
Julie, thank you for saying something. I have really been feeling like there's a disconnect between the raider logo, the new one that's being proposed. And us saying that this raider logo is not an outlaw. It's not a bad guy. It's a towns person. And making all future Northfielders have to explain, no, this is an image of a towns person, not a raider. Even though we call it a raider, that to me is a big disconnect. Also, the most important thing for me has been that it's gender neutral. And I think we are fooling ourselves. We say, oh, yes, girls do wear, you know, cowboy hats. And yeah, sometimes they do, but people, when they look at that, are going to assume it's a male. So it has not been gender neutral. And and I saw those two things as a big disconnect and I was feeling like this train is in motion, the train is in motion. We have a committee that put in a lot of really good work using the directions that we gave it and came up with this. And I want to be very thankful and grateful to the committee for the work they did and not diminish that work in any way. I think the artistry in this logo is great. Nugger really, whoever worked on it did an excellent job. Their skills are, you know, as as far as the the production values of this logo compared to the old logo. This is so far beyond what we had before. But I feel very uncomfortable saddling another generation with what I see as a logo that would be a backwards step for our Raiders. Because they really have taken the term raider and defined it themselves. And they haven't defined it as the bank robbers. They've defined it with a sense of sportsmanship, pride, raider pride. What it means to be a raider and they've created their own definition. And I don't want to make them have to look back on the bank robber and associate with the bank robber. So what I would like to suggest after hearing what you're saying is we differentiate between a mascot and a logo. And we don't need to move forward with a mascot right now. That can be something that we leave. There's no hurry in that decision, but maybe we could come up with a logo, which is the N. Maybe it's an N in a box and N in a circle. I don't know, but it's something with the N and have a logo that could be used across the sports. And I was thinking N over an R, you know, because you could think R for Raiders, but we have the Raiders and the Gators. So the N for Northfield would be more, more of a possibility. If we wanted to have a logo to use on T-shirts and helmets and whatever else. But Julie, you're really courageous to bring this up, to realize that we are the conductors of the train. And we can make it stop if we want to. We don't have to keep going if the momentum is not going in the direction that we want it to go.
Okay, other, thank you, Amy. Other questions, discussion?
I'll second everything that Amy said and thanks Julie for bringing this up and for so eloquently stating the case. And I noticed on social media that there were ninety three comments on the Northfield News article about it. And I, just a rough assessment of that was at least half of them were opposed to the the new mascot. There, they didn't want it, start over, they didn't like it. There were a few that liked the the existing one. And then others who voted on the choices given. But I think in in some of the comments in the community were similar to what Amy just just said, that they're just not. It just doesn't grab everybody with a lot of excitement. And I think is Mr. Quinnell's hat beautifully points out the N is really what's, what you notice when you think of Northfield. And and maybe that's, well, that's probably all we really need going forward. So.
Thanks, Tom. Other questions, comments? Claudia?
I'm also really pleased to hear your statement, Julie. Very well said. And I I feel the same way that I was excited to retire the mascot and and see something upgraded. But I also felt like I was settling for something. I still stand by, you know, my, by my understanding that the logo is gender neutral. I think that the younger generation sees it more as gender neutral and it takes a little bit of convincing for different generations. But at the same time, I just just love your statement and I'm I'm glad to see that we can possibly separate those actions. So we can still retire the raider guy, but not have to settle on something that we're not, as Tom said, passionate about.
Right, thanks, Claudia. Other questions, comments? No?
We got, I've got three comments. One is, I'm really pleased that the students of the North, the students were the first. At least really to publicly recognize the the mascot as inappropriate. And I think it speaks to the sensitivity of our student body and I really appreciate them for bringing that to our attention. Next, I thank the committee for the work that they did. In business, I frequently would put a, assign a group of people to be a committee to research an issue that I was pursuing, only to find out the evidence they came back with. Oftentimes pointed out that I was in the wrong direction and they were very supportive of what I was proposing. But also were very, they had good evidence of why they were proposing something else. And I think the committee did an excellent job in bringing things to our attention that were important. But I also think it helped us to solidify thoughts. And I certainly support the comments that Chair Julie Pritchard made and Board Member Amy made. Thank you so much for your thoughts and and yes, any other board members too.
Thanks, Noel. Other questions, comments? Corey?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with what I've heard so far tonight. I just want to say with what the committee and Nugger were charged with, it was a difficult task. So I think the merit was done there. We we wouldn't have arrived at this point without that contribution. So I think we should applaud the work they've done. And I'm in agreement that I think the N speaks for itself. Jeff speaks loudly over there with his shirt and his hat. I think it makes a good point. There's a great emphasis on the N. And and I was thinking through this too. I think we've all been reflecting on this for a month plus. And really before I even took over on the board, I was thinking about this issue because I knew it was coming up. There's a lot that goes into a logo and I think we're going to spend a lot of time explaining what this could have been. And I think that is not time well spent. We don't need to explain what the N means. So I'm I'm supportive of sticking solely with the N and retiring the current mascot.
Thanks, Corey. Jeff?
Uh, well, it's Captain Obvious over here. You know, wore this to tonight just because I, you know, wore that before and I pardon with, I know you don't like hats in the building, but I'm I'm a tip in mine to yours, to you. You know, I I, you know, I thought the one thing we're going to do here tonight is come and and actually we did is is, you know, vote on the current logo. And you already have, doesn't matter. I mean, you already have four no's. So that's not a pass. And being, you know, not being my first rodeo when you have, and I was wondering who wrote the motion. So we had a conversation before this before and I'll tell you one thing, being on the school board for a while, a lot of things that that and Dr. Richardson told me this is that. You know, what superintendents really like to see is unanimous decision on a lot of things. And I think that that, you know, I want to toss out, we got the the Joles here. And I think that this whole process, the way we did, taking a shot at it and looking at, you know, you know, how you get the community involved. You get Nugger involved, you got all of that and you have the coaches and you came up with what you came up with. And I think that, you know, trying to do a logo that's going to make everybody happy is going to be a hard, you know, that's a hard deal. And and I, what I think that the immediate decisions to make, and it's like when I talked to you when I was being the sports liaison. You know, when I was over at the high school, that number one, we could nail down the colors. I mean, you come from up north and you've, you know, the maroon and gold. So, I mean, we've got two sets of maroon. I mean, you got maroon and you got cardinal. So what are our color codes? And then, I mean, I think this is the sharp N, you know, and we, you know, we, you know, and and when I went in after that and I think, you know, obviously, you know, I know Dave Nugger. Nugger's an expert at logos. And I went in and and sat down with him the first time and he said, he said having an N is not necessarily a bad thing. You know, for a logo, but I I think that that obviously as, I mean, I look at this as default and design. I mean, we tried to take a shot right now at having a a logo we could kind of agree on and and we're just not there. I mean, unfortunately, we're just not there. Now, what do we need? You know, when the first time I talked to you, Joel Olson and Joel Lear, you know, you pulled up all of these uniforms that don't match. Okay? We need our uniform colors. And if we're going to put, I just talked to a coach this last weekend and he looked at the logos. He said, well, those look fine. He says, I just want to know what's going to be on our uniform. And I think that if we can make the decision that we could, you know, whether it's, you know, it's this N and the, you know, the other N or one N. You know what I mean? I mean, I think that that's kind of a better default that we could go with. And I mean, you look at this shirt and it's got, you can see the Northfield and you put, you know, other things on there. I think that that works fine for now. And I think that if we get our colors coordinated, that we're doing for the maroon and gold. And one of the things that kind of irks me when I walk through the high school and other buildings, the colors don't exactly match on the maroon and gold. So we need to nail down our maroon and gold. And I think that, you know, as I've said before, you know, our maroon and golds have always kind of been. You know, like the University of Minnesota, but I mean, obviously being up north at Forest Lake, I mean, you've been through this before. But so I think what we did is we went for, we went for, you know, the logo design, having a logo. And we we've kind of missed the mark. We've got a lot of good ideas and that's kind of on hold. But what I'd like to see, so we can kind of take the immediate pain away, is that, you know, we nailed on what our colors are. And for now, you know, what we're going to do, I I suggest is is keep, you know, use the ends and and move forward. So we can have, you know, uniformed, you know, colors and you know, and all of that stuff moving forward, which I know is, you know, obviously what, you know, you want to do. So I mean, I guess I'd open up some to ask, you know, and and the 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 old raider guy has never been the logo of the district. I mean, it's never been a trademark. It's never been anything. So really, that's necessarily not the case. It's kind of more historical than anything else. But I think just to get some uniformity and to move forward. You know, if we can just move with the, you know, the N and get to where you need to be with uniforms and colors. And so we have some matching across the way. And if we want to revisit what we want for good, you know, a good logo, you know, whenever. We can bring that up again. So that that's my thought. And I thought maybe get some conversation here from the Joles and and Matt, I guess. And and also too, you know, one explanation that I wanted with with is, you know, people don't understand necessarily the Minnesota High School League. I mean, we join the league. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do ourselves, but, you know, we're a member of the league and that's kind of a different conversation. But just to kind of address, you know, some of the things I brought up here and and get some comments, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I would just start by saying, I think this is exactly how processes like this are supposed to work, right? This is a democratically elected board and and this is something that does have value to our community, right? In a lot of different ways, there's some thoughts about how do we represent ourselves, both within the community and most often when we travel outside of the community. And so I want to reiterate what, I want to be very clear that Dr. Lear and Mr. Olson and myself, we serve at the pleasure of the board. And so we try to bring you processes that allow you to get to a decision point on behalf of the constituents whom you serve. Sometimes we are able to bring you unequivocal data, right, about a decision that we're asking you to make. At the end of the day, this is a piece of art, right? And so there can be a lot of different interpretations about how you could move forward with it. And the process, just because it doesn't end as maybe we had envisioned, doesn't mean that the process was any less valuable. I appreciate what Noel said about that sometimes you need the process to get to what the truth is that you're looking for. I do want to make it, you know, very clear that I do think. I do want to make it, you know, very clear that I do think that the process that was managed by Dr. Lear and Mr. Olson was not just good, it was excellent. It did everything that the board asked it to do, right? In terms of, it made sure that it was a broad variety of stakeholders as part of the committee, both students, staff, the staff who were on the committee were, in many cases, were also alumni. There was a multi-round, multi-iterative process where you saw, here are some items, and here's what the preferred item could look like. And we are grateful to the work that Nugger put into it as well. But at the end of the day, you're the group that has to make the decision. Our job is to be able to provide you the data and the resources to be able to do that, and we serve at your pleasure. We serve at the pleasure of the community, and you are their representative. So regardless of how this process ends up, the process in and of itself is worth it. This is not the only thing that we have spent time on over the last few years that didn't result in the intended action when it began. And that's okay. That's how a democracy is supposed to work, right? So if this is the will of the board not to move ahead with it, we will execute your plan just as we would have if you had approved it. So that is, we thank you for the chance to do this work. Of course, when you get to a point where you've put in effort, and then maybe it doesn't come out, there's, there's always going to be a little bit of disappointment. We can't shy away around that. But we are professionals, right? And we execute the plays as you call them, and we will continue to do so. So I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the thoughtful, it is one of the many reasons, this discussion tonight is one of the many reasons that I am incredibly proud to be your superintendent, because you are very thoughtful about these things, and you think about how it's going to have impact beyond just the short term. So regardless of how it plays out, we are proud to serve you, and we will execute the plan as you direct. I don't know if Ms. Dr. Lear or Mr. Olson have anything further to say?
Not that hasn't been said. I mean, I think, Matt, you captured my sentiments exactly. I mean, it needs to be right. And it worked the way it was supposed to work, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for everyone's comments. Thanks for the great discussion, really over the course of this process. And, you know, it was, it was good to be able to come together tonight prior to the, prior to the vote, to say, what, what are we doing? And what, do we understand where we've been? Do we understand where we're going? And have that opportunity for the really good discussion. Based on that, I would like to move forward with, as we know, our two motions. I'll move forward with the first motion, which is retiring the existing Raider mascot. So is there a motion to approve retiring the existing Raider mascot and prohibiting it from further school district use? Existing athletic team uniforms and other district displays of the retired mascot will be phased out as soon as practicable.
Point of information?
Yes.
That's not a registered logo of the school district, anyway, but you're basically saying not to put it on uniforms.
Yeah, it's stated prohibiting it from school district use. So it's just prohibiting the existing Raider mascot from school district use. So thanks for that clarification. So I can reread the motion, or is there a motion to approve? Okay, moved by Claudia. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve retiring the existing Raider mascot and prohibiting it from further school district use. Existing athletic team uniforms and other district displays of the retired mascot will be phased out as soon as practicable. So with the motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. So the next motion was written, obviously, before we had this discussion. And knowing that I was bringing forward my perspective and not sure how other board members felt, but just to be prepared, I did, I would like to propose a modified motion. Anita has copies of that. It will just save us from having to do amendments, et cetera. I am able to, as board chair, to recommend a modified motion. I will allow time for everyone to read that quickly. I will read it, obviously, out loud, and then we can have discussion and questions prior to the vote. Okay, so the modified motion. The motion, is there a motion to not approve the refreshed Raider mascot as presented? Direct administration to not proceed with any further action to develop a new mascot design at this time, and to continue to use the standard Northfield N as the school logo? That is the motion. It is moved by Cory. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions? Discussion? Comments? Jeff?
I would like to get the color issues in there. I mean, what is the maroon? What is the gold? And I mean, there's a, there's a, two different versions of the N. So I think we need to keep, you know, talking about that of what, you know, this is one N that works well, and the two colors, I mean, there's a maroon, maroon, and then there's, there's a cardinal. So you've got those two colors, and then what variations of gold? So I think we need to have those conversations. And I just, you know, you go in your car, you open up the door, you got a paint coat. We should know what those colors are, and we keep uniform in the district with them.
No, and I, I think what we have talked about is really developing that identity guide, which is what schools have, corporations have, colleges, and it really does detail all of those specifics so that anyone who wants to replicate the Northfield N would have direction in terms of its font, its color, its usage.
And Jeff, I would say, I'm not sure that that's actually something that the board would necessarily have to get too detailed. And I think that that's an administrative piece to, what I'm hearing, I have heard, is we want to have consistency so that we are using the similar color scheme regardless. And I think that that, I think our administration's very clearly hearing that charge. We never, one of the things I think of how it got out of, out of alignment is that this board, you know, has not, does not typically approve things like uniform purchases and things like that, right? So we are going to create that internal identity guide, Jeff, that would bring consistency. We do want consistency to the colors that are used in those kinds of things. So I don't think that that's, that's not the kind of thing that we've brought to the board in the past, but we can also very clearly hear the board saying that we want to have some consistency in that moving forward. And I know our administrative is ready to take that on.
And Dr. Hillman, if I could just interject for a second, Joel and I have had this conversation for quite some time, long before we engaged in the, the action that the board requested regarding the logo. Both Joel and I feel very strongly about a consistency across the board with colors. One of the, the issues isn't so much, you know, it's, it's part of that style guide is going to, going to have to identify some consistent vendors so that those dye lots and those pantone colors are consistent across the board. Because where you run into trouble is using six and seven vendors who sort of have a maroon, sort of have a gold. And what we end up with is hodgepodge of variations on the color. So I think that's going to be, that will be easy to do once we establish that style guide, because we'll have to narrow the vendors we're working with for that very purpose.
Thanks, Joel. Amy?
I'm just curious if there is a standard N. Jeff mentioned there are two different N's currently in use. And, and the only reason I ask is that we, it might affect slightly how we word the motion, that they, because they should choose a standard N and then use that N.
And I'd like, Joel, Joel Olson, I believe that we, the, the standard N that we typically use is the one that has the Northfield on the top and the Raiders on the bottom. Is that, that is the one that I'm thinking of? Am I correct in that?
That's correct. And we use that for our chenille letters as well. Where we do have some differences are on some of the hockey jerseys, the football helmet. So we would want to, if there's a potential add or change to the motion to say, you know, current N that is used in the chenille letters will be the N that is used for all uniforms, that might be the, the way to go.
Joel, what I'm hearing you say, though, is that the one that we're talking about, the chenille letter one, is the standard N. But there have been a couple of other variations off of that. So is it fair to say the chenille letter one is the standard and that there are some variations of that? Because in that case, I don't think you need to change the motion, because we've already said that we're going to bring those things into alignment. So I think I would argue that we have a standard N. There have been some instances where we have deviated from that, but I think it's very clear as to what is the standard N.
Correct.
Right, if that's correct, I'm happy with the language.
Thanks, Amy. Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Prior to vote, I am going to reread the motion. Most, the motion on the table with, with a second, just prior to voting, is to approve the refreshed Raider ma, excuse me, motion to not approve the refreshed Raider mascot as presented. Direct administration to not proceed with any further action to develop a new mascot design at this time, and to continue to use the standard Northfield N as the school logo. Again, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One other, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the, the great process. And Joel, Dr. Lear, and Joel Olson, we, I hope you heard the gratitude the board has for the committee's work. It really did help us get to this place. We had said, I believe Cory said it well, I, I think it was a tall task in retrospect, but I think from the onset, we, we wanted to do this right. And I think that the, the committee's work helped us to get there.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
So that's, that said, I'm wondering, is there a way now? Certainly, the word is going to get out, and we are fortunate to have Sam Womis tonight here from the Northfield News. But is there a way to alert the committee in advance of when they would maybe hear it, see it on the Northfield News headlines? And Dr. Hillman, you're on Kim Radio tomorrow morning.
So, I, yes, we will certainly, Dr. Lear, I think between you and I, after the meeting tonight, we can probably get something out to that committee.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Is that something you're willing to take a stab at while I'm finishing the board meeting here?
No problem.
Thank you.
I don't think it has to be real, you know, it doesn't have to be of great length, because we're certainly asking either that or first thing in the morning. But I'm just thinking, just as a courtesy to let the committee know of, of our action tonight. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, so we'll move on. We have another, two, three other items for individual action. We will go through, please. So first is about the handbook approvals that we did review for first reading at our first board meeting in May. So is there a motion to approve the middle school youth center blast plus and hand-in-hand handbooks for the school year 2021-22? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Cory. Any questions or comments on those handbooks?
I just do want to point out that the student citizenship handbook is not included at this point. We'll be bringing that back for approval at the June meeting.
Okay, thank you again for that clarification. So with the motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is the proposed 21-22 budgets, all funds. And thanks to Val's incredible work and moving us through this. Val, if you have some comments before we make the motion, and then people can ask questions during discussion.
Sure.
Thanks, Val.
Yep, I do, I just have a couple of things. So I gave you a print copy of the budget book that I put together. This is one of the primary tools that we have to share transparent and understandable information with the board, our staff, and the community. And so this is, a lot of work goes into this, and I hope that, that you find it useful. Everything that's in here is as presented. So we've, I've been in front of the board the last several months, as well as Erin and Stephanie presenting their respective budgets. So everything that you see and hear should match what you were presented. The only thing that I just want to point out, I did include a page for the building construction fund. I did not present a building construction fund, because we will not have any budgeted funds next year. But I wanted to include kind of the historical context and just where, where the budget was for this year. When you look at that page, it's page 16 for reference, there is, it does look unusual because the ending fund balance does show it's negative. And that's something that I wanted to call out. The, the construction fund as it is, is running over budget as we wrap it up. We did have, when we initially sold the bonds, we were told that we had about 2.2 or 2.4 million dollars of additional authority that we could use. And we made a choice at that time to only bond for the amount we told the voters that it would cost. And there were a few things that occurred, and I will go into more detail at the next meeting. But I wanted just to call it out in case you had questions. We will have Jeff Sealy or Shelby McCoy here at the next meeting to talk a little more in detail about just what happened with the bond proceeds and the situation we're in. And we'll have more detail at the next meeting. But I just wanted to call it out because it does look unusual. I'm not a huge fan of negative fund balances, so I want to just make, bring it to your attention and let you know that we'll have more information for you at the next meeting. So.
And Val, I think it's important to point out that, you know, we are still going to come in less than what we had told the voters at the election, right? So that's the key part, is that we are still coming in quite a bit less than what the bond proposal was on the November 2018 ballot. As we just finish some things up, we need Ellers to come and talk with you about, as we're finalizing that budget, some of the pieces that came into play.
So that, that's all the comments I had, so I'm welcome. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, why don't we do a motion, get the motion on the floor, and then we'll have time for questions and comments? So is there a motion to approve the proposed 21-22 budgets as presented for all funds? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Okay, Amy, you have a question?
So should we expect to hear about another bond that we would issue to cover the difference? Is that where we're headed, or is it something completely different?
No, we'll have a variety of options to consider, but it won't likely be a bond.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Val, for all your incredible work. We really appreciate it, and it is great to have this additional information about the building construction fund. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So our last item for individual action is the motion that we move to, to item for individual action. So that motion would be, is there a motion to continue with the additional OT occupational therapist at Northfield Community Education Center at a .5 FTE for the 21-22 school year? The total projected cost of salary is $35,544 and benefits is $15,544 for a total of $66,636, with approximately 55% of the salary reimbursed through special education revenue for a net cost of $31,538. Moved by Cory. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That does take care of items for individual action. We can move on now to items for information. We have an update on the area learning center graduation.
Yes, as I mentioned in my COVID update earlier this evening, ALC graduation is still scheduled for June 3rd. But again, because of the change in the restrictions, the COVID-related protocol restrictions, that has been moved to 6:00 PM. I believe it previously was at 3:30 PM, and it's going to be held in the Northfield High School Auditorium as opposed to the yard outside here of the district office. So we just know that board members like to attend that. We want to make sure you know the time and location for it.
Okay, thank you. Future meetings, Monday, June 14th, 2021, 7:00 PM here at our Northfield District Office Board Meeting, a boardroom. We only have one meeting in July, our second, or in June. Our meeting in July then would be Monday, July 12th. That one also at 7:00 PM in the Northfield District Office Boardroom. So that takes care of future meetings. I just want to thank everyone. I just really appreciate serving on the board with everyone who has, offers different perspectives. And, and I think the, the example that we had of, of moving through retiring the current Raider mascot and continuing forward as we had decided. moving through retiring the current Raider mascot and continuing forward as we had decided is, is really, is really a good place for us to be. And I just appreciate everyone's dedicated service and to realizing that, that together, we really, we really did some good work. So thank you to everyone for that, and especially to those who, who helped us get to, to, to the decision we did tonight, which is the committee and our, our community and Dr. Hillman's leadership, and of course, Dr. Lear and Joel Olson. So, so with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.